Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we please stand for a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM, the 30th day of October. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. The presiding officer is Joseph Robert, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Michael A. Wonko, Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Copaz, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Maida, Board Secretary, Mr. Thomas Figu, Jr., Acting School Business Administrator, Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Mitchell Piscopo Esquire, our Board Counsel. The meeting's open to the public. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
President.
Trustee Cruden.
President.
Trustee Finerty.
Present.
Trustee Lawande.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Ryan.
President.
Trustee Velado.
President.
Vice President Willbeck.
Here.
President Broderick.
Here.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
At this time, we'll start with our approval of... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Okay, before we start tonight, I'd just like to ask everyone to give a moment of silence. We lost two of our family. Jimmy Casimir, who was a custodian here at the high school for many years, I was proud to work with him, and Mr. Wayne Fratko, who is part of our English department. They'd be sorely missed, along with the tragedies in Pittsburgh and North Carolina and unfortunately other places in this world right now. If we could say a prayer and have a moment of silence, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to start with our approval of amends and acceptance of communications. You'll see a list of all the communications, and everything is up on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I have a motion from Trustee Cruden. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Trustee Velado. Mr. D'Angelo, please to the microphone.
One of the correspondents is the... From me, the chapter 78, "I ask the Board to consider some relief for the teachers and secretaries. I sent a second letter, I still haven't gotten an answer." Do you have one for me tonight?
Uh, no.
Mr. D'Angelo, I sent you a letter on October 19th.
You said I'd hear it tonight.
Excuse me?
The letter said you would be addressing it tonight.
But the letter said, I'll read it to you. The letter was dated October 19th, and it said that I would meet with the Board tonight, and then I would get back to you.
I'm gonna wait longer for this answer?
Yeah.
Then be on tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And do you think it's reasonable that I would talk to the Board before I spoke to you?
I gotta have an answer before the election for these new Board members.
Well, don't tell me when you're gonna answer.
Well, I'm just...
Well, look at the options.
I'm gonna tell you, so you don't think I'm doing anything underhanded. Okay, so we have a...
Mr. President. We have a motion and a second.
Mr. President, before we vote on that, can I say something?
Sure.
So amongst all the retirements and resignations, and you know, I want to thank everyone on this list for their service to the Board of Ed and all the resignations, I wish you well. I just want to point out that our accountant, Matt Bolden, is actually leaving us. He's leaving the district, and he came to us during very uncertain times, when he first got here. It was a very scary time in the Board of Ed. I think everyone on the dais and everyone in the crowd remembers that. We went through a lot of trouble, and Matt came into this district and replaced our former accountant, and he brought in a level of calm and a level of clarity that this district and this Board needed. And I just want to publicly acknowledge him and thank him for all the hard work that he has done, because I have no doubt that he is one of the people that put us back on the right track in this district. So I want to thank you publicly, and I want to say I wish you luck in all your future endeavors, and thank you for your contribution, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on approval of amends and our acceptance of communications. On that motion and second... One second, please, okay. Trustee Alonzo.
Aye.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Next up is a commendation, which I'd like to read into the record. Whereas Philo Abraham, a senior at Bayonne High School, is recognized by earning a perfect score of 800 on the College Board SAT mathematics section of the assessment. Whereas Philo has scored a perfect 800 on the College Board SAT mathematics section of the assessment, this is a prestigious accomplishment, and it is a credit to our high school mathematics program and its teachers. Resolved that this Board of Education wishes to extend their sincere congratulations to Philo for being exemplary and wish him success in his future endeavors. This is by the Committee of the Hall. Philo, would you and your family please come up?
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I could've done it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Glad to sit here and congratulate you and your family.
Next up, we'll start our consent agenda. We'll start with our area of curriculum, which are Resolutions A1 through A29. I remind everyone that all the resolutions are on our bulletin board. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Trustee Cruden and a second by Trustee Velado on our curriculum agenda. On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trust... I'm sorry, Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Next up is our building, finance, and grounds. It'll be Resolutions B1 through B9. Resolution B8 is being tabled. So Resolution B8 is being tabled. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So a motion by Trustee Munoz and a second by Trustee Alonzo. On that motion and second, Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trust... I'm sorry, Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Next up is our building, finance, and grounds. It'll be Resolutions B1 through B9. Resolution B8 is being tabled. So Resolution B8 is being tabled. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
So a motion by Trustee Munoz and a second by Trustee Alonzo. On that motion and second, Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Then we have one item on our non-consent agenda, Resolution D1. A resolution to authorize participation in the New Jersey State Health Benefits Program Act of the State of New Jersey for local prescription drug coverage. Be it resolved the Bayonne Board of Education, a participating employer in the health benefits program hereby elects to participate in the local prescription drug program provided by the New Jersey State Health Benefit Act of the State of New Jersey, and to authorize coverage of all employees and their dependents thereunder in accordance with the statute and regulations adopted by the State Health Benefits Commission. As a participating employer, we will remit to the State Treasury all premiums on accounts of employee and dependent coverage, their periodic charges in accordance with the requirements of the statute and rules and regulations duly promulgated thereunder. We hereby appoint the executive administrative assistant pension benefits to act as the certifying officer in the administration of the program. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Coverage shall be effective as of January 1st, 2019, or as soon thereafter as it may be effectuated pursuant to the statutes and regulations. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll make that motion, a second.
Mr. D'Angelo?
I heard what you said, but I've been getting different messages all during the day on this. Does this mean that you are going into this plan effective January 1st, if it's possible?
Yes. No help. Mr. Figu?
I need a mic.
Can I have mine?
Nice. Give him a hug.
The purpose of the resolution is to do a 60-day hold, to give notice over 60 days, and it's a hold. The resolution is just gonna hold our place. We aren't going to have more information. We will definitely share that with you and everyone involved, and then we'll go from there with the rest.
That's the way I understood it, but the way I heard it read now, it was a done deal.
It's a hold.
So it is possible that we would remain a pro act under certain circumstances.
If they were to come back with, say, a counter-program, that would be better, and we could still do that.
Right.
Anyways, for that to happen, we need this to be signed.
I got it. Thank you.
So I have a motion and second on Resolution D1. On that motion and second, Trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Lawande.
Yes.
Vice President Willbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. President, that is all I have for this evening, but we do have questions.
Before we start the questions, I'd like to have our Chairman of the Finance Committee, who'd like to make a little statement. Trustee?
Thank you, President Broderick. So this Board has gone out of its way to be as transparent with the citizens of Bayonne as possible. We have put stuff out there that is sometimes popular and sometimes popular. You know, we are good and bad guys. So as a result of our continuing audits, after our apparent financial difficulties of the past, we have had ongoing audits that we have done internally, as well as receiving an anonymous tip about certain practices that has happened previously in the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed entered into contracts with Risk Consultants, which is an independent auditor, to audit our payroll system, and they had been doing this investigation since about June 14th. They went five years back into our payroll, and what we discovered was between the years of 2012 to 2017, 15% of our payroll was paid out without Board approval, which means that people were paid, that in some instances did the work, but it was not put on Board agenda for approval. That was what was discovered by the audit. This is still an ongoing audit. We are still in the process of doing that, and it is personnel matter. So at this time, we will not take any questions, but I want to let you know that the Board is taking it very seriously. These practices were stopped somewhere in 2017. We couldn't find anything after that, after new things that the Board put in place. One of the things that the Board is doing now is that we are installing hand cameras... Sorry, hand scanners for after-school programs for the employees, along with cameras. We are installing cameras with longer memory to view all areas, and an investigation is still ongoing. Again, we're not suggesting any impropriety was done. What we are suggesting is that during those period... During that period of time, 15% of the payroll that was processed by the former Board or the current Board did not have resolutions to back that up. Again, this was a failure and breakdown of accounting practices that we are addressing, and we have improved, and it's getting better every day. But we wanted to share this with the public, and we did that because, again, we listen, we hear rumblings, we know that this is kind of circulating in circles around Bayonne, and we want to be fair and transparent and get the truth out there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee.
First off, I'd like to offer my apologies. There was a card on the table by a member of the public that had a question on a resolution, and I will address that now. Melissa Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. It was Resolution A16, which is staff members to our after-school academic reading and math support. If you'd still like to ask that question, I apologize for not seeing the card over there before.
It's okay, thank you. Melissa Gudowski, 178 Avenue F. So as with everything the Board's doing, I think this is a great program. Math and reading being major subjects, I just want to know how that information's gonna get translated to parents, because I know there are some people... I'm kind of one of those that are a little bit concerned about those math and reading grades, how those children are gonna have access to that resource, since we're adding additional teachers to this program.
Let's get that to... What are you talking about, the Orange After-School Readings? Yes, good evening. That's a Title I program that introduces students in grades 3 to 8, and it's an after-school program. Remember, Title I is the money received comes from the economically disadvantaged. It's a federal program, and then it gets put into the hands of the students that are academically at risk. It meets one time a week. So if you're in a class and there's a teacher that observes, again, I handle the financing, but teachers in the schools and the principals will select and send a letter home.
And that's great. I want... Is there any way that we might be looking into possibly expanding with those... The grade average going up, are we looking at maybe how are we reassessing, other than a teacher observation? Not that I have a problem.
Oh, you're looking for more after-school support?
In addition to this, because some kids fall into that category and don't always get the opportunity for the program, just because it's based on observation.
You know what else we do, just so you know? In lower grades, K to 2, we do offer the Hundred Book Challenge, and we offer the Orange program for the 3 to 8. If there's more funding, I just gladly talk to the principals and see if we can put more programs in place. As persons who charge for curriculum instruction, the more we can do, the better. I can also tell you, there are AM tutorials in high school. I'm not sure what grade level you're talking about.
It's a little spread out. It's just not...
These are the things we do. We have the AM tutorials in high school, we have the afternoon tutorial in the high school, our Orange program, there's a program in math. There are some programs that are available on Saturdays for science, for 7 and 8. Again, depending on funding, we do our best to make sure we provide as much as we can.
I appreciate that. It's just a question I know a lot of parents had about Title I.
Did I get your question?
You did. I will call you, but it's just a lot of that conversation happening around parents and being concerned.
Let me know what the people want, and we'll see if we can do it.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Gudowski.
Great, thank you. First up, second up, is our student representative to the Board, Arsh Banerjee, Bayonne High School.
Good evening, Board of Ed trustees, Superintendent Dr. Wonko, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Copaz, and Dr. Degnan. My name is Arsh Banerjee, and as a Board of Ed representative for the student government, I hope to inform you of a number of events the student government has hosted and participated in over the last month. On October 9th, the student government participated in the Fall Conference for the New Jersey Association of Student Councils. At this meeting, the student government represented Bayonne High School at the convention and attended a number of leadership workshops. In addition, at the state student council meeting this year, our executive board nominated Dylan Hedler, our publicity chair, to be slated to run for a state board position.
All right.
In regards to some of the events we've organized this month, today, the student government hosted an activities fair in the main gym to inform some of our 8th graders in the school district about the various available student clubs and organizations, which provide students at Bayonne High School with an opportunity to express themselves and explore their own interests. This event was a success, and we've had the incoming freshmen from all the elementary schools in Bayonne to come to the high school to see the many extracurriculars we have to offer. Lastly, the student government has also organized our annual Fright Night, which has consistently been a successful and fun event for students over the years. Fright Night is actually occurring tonight, and we're hoping to create an exciting, engaging, and hopefully frightening experience for this Bayonne student body. Again, thank you for all your continued support of the student government and your time today.
I have a few cards for speakers on a particular topic, but I'm gonna ask that Caitlin Morrell for Bayonne High School is gonna read a statement and start off. Possibly, if we answer her questions, that may satisfy the other cardholders. And Caitlin, when you're done, if you don't mind, can we have a copy of your speech?
Yep.
Can go to our recorder? Thank you.
Before you start though, thanks. Congratulations, second place in the state.
And percussion's first in the state.
Seems like I'm reading into something there, honey.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Ed trustees, Superintendent Dr. Wonko, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Copaz, Dr. Degnan, and Mr. Figu. My name is Caitlin Morrell, and I'm a senior here at Bayonne High School. I'm here today to speak to you on behalf of my fellow classmates regarding the fate of our indoor percussion program. For the past four years, I've been a member of this ensemble, and I've loved every single moment of it. But now, here we are in my senior year, and I'm being told by the director of the Fine Arts in the band that we will not be having an indoor percussion program this year, and I'm absolutely devastated. Indoor affords me and my fellow percussionists the opportunity to be challenged.
You're doing fine. You're doing great. You're taking your time.
Just relax. Just relax. Okay, we're all here. Yes, you can. For the past four years, I've been a member of this ensemble, and I have loved every single moment of it. But now, here we are in my senior year, and I'm being told by the director of the Fine Arts and the band director that we will not be having an indoor program this year, and I'm absolutely devastated. Indoor affords me and my fellow percussionists the opportunity to be challenged and become better at our craft. An ensemble which is what they have discussed will not afford the same opportunities, because there is no competition and no opportunity for growth. We will all strive to do better each week so that we can win, not just to put on a performance for our families and friends. Also, it gives opportunities for further advancement as others become aware of our talents, which is importantly especially, which is important, especially as I'm looking forward to go to college for music education with a concentration in percussion. When I asked why we are not having the program this year, I was told it is not in the band director's vision. I'm confused as to why this is playing a factor into the decision of the fate of our indoor program, because she has never been involved with our indoor program before, so why does it matter now? Also, I've heard from other people that the reason why we are not having indoor is because we simply do not have the funds to pay for it, which if this is the case, why haven't we received any funding? We have tried relentlessly to ask for help from our directors, but they refused to meet with us and help us fix this problem. We are here for your help, lucky you did help us.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up here. The... I've spoken to our superintendent, Dr. Wonko, and he informed me that at this moment, you know, there's going to be a meeting between the director of art and music and the parents on Thursday. Now, we hope there's some kind of... Well, we gotta get to Thursday.
They're told that it's not going to happen.
But if that doesn't happen, you know, it'll come back to our attention, and we will certainly look into this in another way. The last thing we want is anybody to not be in a program, to not do something. I'm hoping that Thursday will be a good situation. If that's not the case, then we'll have to look at it another way, but...
I had an email from the city director of the arts, what they're gonna discuss on Thursday, and he told us basically, it's over. They're giving them ensemble, and that's it. That's her vision, and basically, that's what they're giving them. They don't really care. They would not even... They refuse to meet with these children. These children came, and they said point-blank they would not meet with them. They told them they were going to come here, and they said, "Good, go to the Board." They didn't care.
I spoke to Mr. Frank today and said, "We need you to agree with the Thursday to discuss this with you." As Mr. Broderick said, our president, if you are not satisfied with his resolution of this concern at that Thursday meeting, I would then be happy to have our director of curriculum and myself sit down with you and discuss it further.
Do you have treaty notes in the subject? They were ready to go. We're going to meet that weekend. We're going to today.
Well, just so everyone understands, we always follow protocol and procedure, and you have to give everyone a chance to fix whatever it is at the lowest possible level.
That's why I tried to reach out and prior to this, and I said the exact same thing you said. I do not think it's right to go behind anybody's back. I think it's to come to your face and to talk to you and offer you an opportunity to rectify the situation, and I was told multiple times, "Doesn't matter, you're not getting it. It's done." So we will need that meeting. Just telling you now.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Robert. Trustee Ryan. Caitlin. Caitlin, one thing, I don't know why you don't have a problem, well, you don't have a program, rather, but I can tell you one thing, it's not funding. That's not the issue. That absolutely is not the issue. Number two, we spend a large amount of money trying to keep you safe, but the big problem, the big way to do it, rather, is to make you happy and to keep you included. I am most disturbed that you were told it was already decided and that this is a done deal, because that's not helping our safety issue at all. It may be a very good reason why we can't do it, but you deserve at least a fair hearing, and that's going to happen one way or the other.
Caitlin, before you said, could you please tell me, did you have an indoor percussion ensemble last year?
They've had it every year.
I was not aware that you did not have it this year. None of this board wants.
Yeah, no, we had it last year. The student number, we all wrote our show.
Hopefully, we can get it back. Thank you.
Dylan Hedler, if you want to get up, or if that's satisfied, you're good with that?
Get off.
Okay. And we're gonna let Dylan have his time too.
Dylan, you're going for a state student council position? This is an opportunity for you to hone your public speaking skills, because that's what mom wants, so go for it.
Dylan, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Board of Ed trustees, Superintendent Dr. Wonko, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Copaz, and Dr. Degnan, and Mr. Figu. My name is Dylan Hedler. I've been a part of the BHS marching band and indoor percussion since 8th grade. This week, after the BHS marching band took home second place at state championships with our highest score ever, and we won Best Percussion, I found out that we will not have an indoor percussion this year.
have an indoor percussion this year. Even though the band has received no money the last two years, the reason they do not want indoor percussion is not financial. The reason is that it has been decided that this is not in the band director's vision. What about our vision? We, the students, want to continue to march indoor percussion, and it's ending for no good reason. Is there any other music teacher in Bayonne that shares our vision? If so, could you please allow them to teach our marching band director what we'll not?
Thank you.
So, Dylan, just to say that, I graduated Bayonne High School class of nineteen, I'm not going to tell you, class of 1995 proudly, and when I was a student here, the current superintendent was my principal, Dr. Wonko, and he had a longstanding tradition at Bayonne High School that if you had at least a minimum of, how many kids was it, ten?
Ten.
A minimum of ten kids that wanted to do something, we would find you somebody. So, I am confident that regardless of all, when all these meetings are said and done, that we will get you that advisor you want, so you can get out there and you can compete. I'm confident that Dr. Wonko will make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Even if it's actually trustee Munoz.
Michael Mallon, I'm sorry, Michael Malloy. You want to? You're good? Nobody going to yell at you? Sure? Anne Morell, 36 West 39th Street. If you're good.
Well, okay.
All right, you can yell that too.
Sorry, I have my notes on my pad, and basically, I'm talking for the same reason.
Excuse me, Jan. Can you put the microphone to your face? Is that good? Is that good? Okay. I'm up here to speak on behalf of the students who just won first in the state in their division of percussion. They are an amazing group, a dedicated, hard-working group of children who are passionate about their craft. They are now being told that they will not have an indoor season because the band director, it's not her vision. They can have an ensemble. To me, that is like, that the parents can obviously come and sing. That is like telling the football players, "We're not going to have football games anymore, but don't worry about it. We'll have scrimmages, and you can come to that." Or a thespian telling them, "We're no longer doing plays, but we'll have skits." So, you know, the parents can come to class for that. That's fine, that should be good enough for you. It's not good enough. It's not. And an ensemble will not afford the same opportunities these children have worked so hard for, and certain children, such as my daughter, who is a senior, who came into the academy as a percussionist. This is taking away opportunities for advancement, which is detrimental in her pursuit of a college education. We are taking away opportunities from these children, and for the life of me, I cannot understand why, when the band director was not involved last year in indoor, and we had an indoor season. So, I'm confused as to why this is affecting her now, and we have also been advised at a meeting that the band has received zero funding from the board. And I want you to be aware of that. We were told for the past two years, they have gotten nothing.
It's not true, just saying.
So, I think it needs to be brought up, because that's what the parents are being told. There is zero funding. And I'm coming here for help for the kids, basically. That's all, but I kind of think it's been everything. But I just wanted you to be aware of what's being said, and we're asking for help. We've tried. We've tried relentlessly. They will not listen. These kids have gone to offices, and we're told to go away. Isn't this supposed to be about what the kids want?
Yes.
Not what's convenient for somebody else? That's not okay. So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Michael Malloy, 197 Avenue C.
Mike Malloy, 197 Avenue C. Thank you. Just going off the tail end there, I am a band parent, so I am speaking or asking this question upon, most of the band parents and Uber driver for most of these kids over here. But my question is, not asking about, you know, why do we have it, but my question is, we were advised at one of the band parent meetings that there is no budget. My question to you was simple. Is there funds in the board's budget allocated to the marching band? That's my question to you.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Last year, we went to zero-based budgeting, where each chair, each director, each principal formulated their budget starting from zero, and then came in and met with the cabinet, which consisted of the business person, the curriculum person, and personnel, and they justified to us what they would need in their budget to run a successful program. Every department did that.
Okay, does that mean we have a budget for the marching band? Because we were told over the last two years, we are working with a zero budget.
No, zero budget means that's where you start.
Okay, how about, there is no money. How about, that's what they said, there is no money for the band. We are doing, as parents, we are doing all the fundraising to get the kids what they need, even the little items that should be supplied by the schools. I'm not talking the extra stuff, I'm talking the items that should be supplied by the school. And in fact, coming up, we have another fundraiser just to supply these kids what's going on. So, that's the question, you know, where's this money? And if it is, how come it's not getting to the rightful people? That's the question.
Tomorrow, I will sit down with our business administrator and the director of the program and review those finances.
Excuse me, Mr. Broderick. Dr. Wonko, if I'm understanding this gentleman correctly, if there were no money for the marching band, that would be because the director did not ask for it.
If that's the case, yes. But keep in mind, we have an advisor for the marching band, which is in the budget already, so I have to believe that there was something put in there. But again, I don't have those figures in front of me.
That would be an answer for us. I mean, even the parents would, I mean, because we're even having the staff that we have, if fundraiser is coming, going, that money is going to the staff also, so if it's zero...
You should not be paying any money to staff members.
Well, that needs to be looked at, because that's what we are, we're holding something over at the...
That's against board policy.
Well, I think we need to look at, we need to look at other stuff then.
President Broderick and trustee Munoz, as chairman of the finance committee, I think we should have an emergency meeting in light of this.
Well, I would suggest, once again, why don't we wait till the meeting on Thursday, and then we will discuss that with, I could discuss that with Dr. Wonko on Friday.
However, tomorrow, I will look into the finances. I will bring the principal over as well, and we will review that. He will also be at that meeting with Dr. Dugan and myself.
Okay, so, just to answer your question, trustee Alonso, I do agree with you that this needs to be looked at by finance, but again, allow administration to do their job, have their meeting, and also find out that question. It was the request put in a particular amount for the marching band in the budget. Let's find out those questions first, and then we'll make our determination from there. So, as soon as we get that in an email, we'll contact each other, and then we'll call that meeting.
One quick observation on that, trustee Munoz.
Yes.
Perhaps you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. There's some kind of discrepancy. Does this come under the athletic department or the music and art department?
Music and art.
Music and art.
Because some people are saying it's athletic.
Now, we're told it's the athletic department.
That's what I'm saying. Some people think it's music and art, and other people, well, that's what I think, because it's the music. But I'm hearing that it has been proposed to the athletic department. So, which is it, athletic or music and art? That's another thing that one needs to consider here.
Right. Because I'm asking, my question, even though my question is not about the percussions for wind percussions, I'm talking, we're talking about the marching band. We have a Bayonne High School marching band that fund for that. I don't want to get confused with that.
Right, right. Let me just clarify that the marching band falls under the jurisdiction of the director of music and art, not the director of athletics. Therefore, it is a music and art.
Because I think we're being told, even in our meetings, we're being told different things.
Yeah, but they also even told you that there's no money, so that's...
Correct. So, that's why, let's come right here and ask that question. So, that's going to be also on Thursday, that maybe if we're present on Thursday, we can resolve something there?
Yes.
Is that my...
Yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we, yeah, if you had a card, I'd let you, but what's the board tells me otherwise? Okay. Next up.
Please come up and speak. No, please come up.
Would you, but, but would you please fill out a card after you finish speaking?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I am Cheryl Hedler, parent of obviously Dylan Hedler. I am here to tell you, as the president of the band parent foundation, we fundraise for every single dime to pay for our staff, not our band director, every other one we have. We have a, we have a winds lady, a front ensemble person. All of their stipends, or whatever you want to call them, come out of all the funds that we raise.
Well, I repeat what I said before, that is against board policy, and any staff member who receives monetary gifts from any parent group has violated that policy.
Hold on. Are you talking about like private tutors that run the drum line, or are they our employees?
I, they're employees. They work with our band.
Yeah, but they don't work...
Some of them work for the district, not all.
Right. So, the people that work for the district are paid by the district, not, you know, you're talking about the extra assistant coaches and, you know, okay.
I know what you mean.
Are they our teachers or other people?
Some are, some aren't.
The ones that are our teachers are the ones we're responsible for, and that would violate the policy. The ones that are outside individuals who are not on our payroll, you could do that.
Okay. That should come out of ours, then.
If you want to.
The extra you would want, yes.
If you want that, right, you're not saying they're making you do that, right?
Yes, we have to pay for the band foundation parents, raise money to pay for all of our staff.
Because you get a certain amount of instructors, right? So, you got like a band director, you get assistant band director, you have a certain amount of instructors. Anything that the band director wishes after that, that's going to work with the drum line or the, give me, I don't know, the twirlers.
The horns, the...
Color guard, right? Sorry. Anything after that that's not in the budget, if the band director and the parent foundation choose to bring those in to work with the kids, that's on you. But like, you have a certain amount of people per program. That's basically what we're saying.
Oh, trustee Munoz, we still need a criminal record check.
No, 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 they are. They're volunteers, they're volunteers with the district where they are, they are fingerprinted.
My assumption would be that the director has these volunteers go through the process because that has to go on board resolution with our approval, so they can work with our students, which includes fingerprints.
Last year, they were, so I don't know, I'm assuming this year they were too.
At this point, I just request that you give us at least till tomorrow, so the superintendent can find it, because we're just going to have conjecture here all night long. We'll have answers tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Joe Wyatt, 301 Maple Avenue, 261 North Flame Field.
So, now that the contract is settled, and the brouhaha about the budget is over, as I promised you, I'm going to start a deep dive into what this is all about. And I'm going to start asking very pointed questions. I'm going to try to expose what's really going on, and so we can face the problems instead of papering them over. But first, I have to kind of set the stage by what's, if I drill down deep through the muck of the bureaucracy and the politics and hit bedrock, what's there? And to do that, I have found a poem that kind of really points us in the direction, what should we be thinking about as the bedrock of what we're up to? Because I use this poem when I'm trying to decide what should I teach my children. And so, but unfortunately, I cannot do it in two minutes. I need a little more time. So, I'm requesting that the board give me about 10 minutes. It probably won't take that long, but give me 10 minutes to read this poem, and then just a short discussion about it.
I'd like to remind the board, it is on our agenda, and we have a policy, that policy is three minutes. I point that out to the board, if they're going to change, and change the time requirement in the policy, I'd ask them to do a revision to their policy. But if not, they should follow the policy in place. So, I stopped the clock, I'm going to start it again. You're welcome to continue.
I've made a request. Are you denying that request? I've made a request for additional...
We're sticking to our policy, Mr. Wyatt.
Okay, well then, okay, well, then, okay, that's the way you want to do it. I'm willing to come here for three minutes from now till doomsday. Now, this is ridiculous for you. I'm not asking you to change the policy, I'm asking you to give me a little bit of extra, to give me an exception for this particular case. And you didn't hold that policy for the people that were coming up here. Come on, that discussion went on a lot longer than three minutes, okay? And I also know that the three-minute policy only came into existence after I started talking to this board years ago, because I remember talking to Dr. Mrs. Yerschek, and she said, "Yeah, you know, you're right. They never had a three-minute policy until you started standing up and saying things." So, if you're going to suppress the people that are trying to bring some reason and get you to start thinking and develop a conversation, so we can really make this thing great.
Mr. Wyatt, what is your question?
I want to have 10 minutes, and you're saying you're going to stick by your policy. So, I made a request, and it's, I'm not asking you to change your policy, I'm asking you to grant an exception, which you're perfectly capable of doing. Huh? I just said, I want 10 minutes to read the poem. I can't read it in three minutes.
Can you send us the poem?
Huh? No, I want it read. Poems are designed to be read. If I send it to you, I have no idea whether you read it or not. If I say it, then it's in the record, and your response is in the record.
Thank you very much. Mr. DeAngelo, why don't you take us home?
Hey, I do want to say one thing. Ash, you happen to have a tennis shirt on, correct, for the boys? Not the boys, but the girls happen to win the county championship this year. Interesting enough, interesting enough, they won it on a year, unfortunately, because they had that pipe, they had no courts to play on. So, maybe we should take away the baseball field, but congratulations to the tennis team.
Dylan, did you?
And with that said, is there a, I'll get it, is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
Motion by trustee Cruden, is there a second by trustee Luande? On that motion and second to adjourn, trustee Alonso. Trustee Cruden. Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Luande.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz.
Sure.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Aye.
Vice President Will Beck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
It is 8:49. The board's in closed session, they will not return.